All right, so we are coming out of our brief recess. That we have councillor Bragdon here in person with us. We will start. As though councillor Pelletier just read the order and it was a motion made by council Pelletier, signed by council McGowan. We are now in the public hearing.
Officially five forty-seven in the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And so I'm going to start by going section by section. So our, our last meeting, this is the second reading. We had one other meetings on fire where we received comments and had some discussion and councillor Bragdon pretty much took us through the whole changes. So today, at the end of this, we will be voting on this ordinance. To start off, we're going to go section by section and I want to hear from councillors if there are some changes, any amendments that we want to consider. And then we can hear from the public. So for those that have, I'm not sure, do you have it to put on the screen as the manager? Or is this person might have a printed copies?
Do you like the?
Yeah, that would be the clean version. They really, not enough, the clean version of our.
The intended ordinance.
Of the intended ordinance. Chapter thirty-nine, retail cannabis establishments and retail cannabis social clubs. So the first section is just talks about the authority. Go to the next page and then it gets into the definitions. And again, we got these work with our lawyer and state. So definitions, section thirty-nine, on three. Objection of adult use cannabis establishments and adult use cannabis social clubs. Go to section thirty-nine. This ordinance would take an effect thirty days after the enactment. Otherwise, change that. Then it gets into the penalties, section thirty-nine. Which will be enforced by code enforcement officer. And we get into the meat of it now, article two. Section thirty-nine-two slash one. We'll start on this page, so. I know councillor Pelletier, so we'll.
Yes, we have three amendments offered in this section, first one being thirty-nine-two-one B. Which reads, no more than two medical cannabis storefronts and two dispensaries shall be located in town and middle market. Motion to amend to add the following. Not to add, change the language to that section. Oh, excuse me, no, to add, yeah, to add to that line, no more than two cannabis businesses will be located in the downtown commercial zone.
So we have a motion to add to that section. Do I have a second? I will second that motion, so councillor Pelletier made the motion to amend that section.
No.
Yeah, no. We're not considering, and I'm not either.
That's his, he's making.
This is my change my motion, I'll discuss. We'll get it.
So we have, so we have a motion to amend and we have a second. By myself. So a discussion on this amendment?
I want to hear your thoughts on that. Well, it isn't what's wrapped in ones.
Again, as I repeated in the last meeting, my. Reasoning for this, this change to limiting who the four visits the downtown. Is that, no, we do want to, we don't have a very long. There, the downtown. Well, two of that one business, I think. Either, you know, whatever mix it is, fine, that too. There are plenty of other commercial zones that will fit under current zoning ordinance. Just a matter of ending up with work.
Councillor Bragdon, you're reading a paper that, a motion that I was suggesting that I haven't, he, he read what he was suggesting. I was thinking that we would add, none would be allowed in zones, one R two and, and C, which are residential sections and neighborhood. Those are my considerations, you're just seeing some of my notes.
I respond to that with current zoning. Allows for business, not businesses to be in those others' home, defines what they are. And so, if I'm understanding it correctly. Neighborhood highway commercial would be, I mean. Businesses don't obey that's your. So it would be those, about two commercials on about the other business.
So any other council comment on?
Changing anything else. Get the wish we have served by.
So as far as any other. Council comment on. So.
All of it.
Yeah. I'll take it to the public for this amendment. So it currently says the amendment would read, no more than two medical cannabis storefronts and two dispensaries shall be located in the town and middle market. And no more than two cannabis businesses will be located in the downtown commercial zone. So you need to, please, please come to them, please come to the council comment, would you, our questions, please come to the mic, state your name. And address, please.
Oh, well, I should be one-five-nine Arustic Avenue.
I'm sorry, you didn't get your first name?
Raphael.
Yeah, okay.
One-five-nine Arustic Avenue.
Thank you.
I was just curious if you're being downtown is just this road, or what is their downtown?
So I would defer even. To the manager, the code, yeah, can I? What was it with the downtown commercial zone is, excuse me, thank you for that question.
Tom Malcolm, code enforcement. Business, the business just got out from Central Street. To. Bird Street. About that way up the park. About so long as there. That one is, that and the.
Is that considered, so to clarify.
Those two in this.
They're considered downtown?
Downtown.
So we already have one downtown, this would allow us to have one more and no more, so it still allows one more downtown.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Tom, before you sit down, as you help grab the twenty of your thoughts. Amendment.
I understand when Jane comes talked about this afternoon, I understand what she's saying, having to downtown commercial area. They don't, they have one way or the other. The other amendment that talked about today. By his attention, McPhayor.
We just hope, can we hold that?
We hold it.
Yeah, let's get through this first one, so it doesn't. Yeah, so I think what councillor Bragdon is asking, because I had also suggested that we also include that none be allowed in R one, R two. And neighborhood commercial, I, I think that's what he was.
Just asking his fellow.
Okay, thank you.
Because I'm on the fence about it, you know, hearing council base comments last night. I kind of agree.
Yeah. Sorry, so. As we worked to digitalize our. Zoning map and. Upgrade that through the, this is the. Someone through. Version. So. This drag coming down. Turns into neighborhood. Comes down, this is the downtown intersection here. And Central Street continues here. So downtown commercial include. This area like their bank savings bank is. Lot that. Selling. Three is there. And then this head down, Rob Scott Avenue, they were, we are now. And it's all the way down there. And then on the other side of Rob Scott Avenue. Round to the next street over, it comes all the way down. This side of Arustic Avenue and then. Over behind the Alps and two. So it's, it's. Basically, this section of Central Street on both sides. From Scott Avenue on both sides. Arustic Avenue on just this side. And then. It includes like here. Down through Valley.
Councillor Bragdon?
Finishing my thought with. I think I'm gonna stand by my original, I was, I don't. By his downtown corridor. See.
We can't do.
Well, we can talk, but we don't have to issue it.
We can't, we, we, the administration can't. Pick and choose. Our single out of the business. We, we, we need to. Down. As to what. We, you know, just because down the street, we. We can't pick and choose. In a neighborhood.
I'm gonna do that one. So.
But the liquor life. Eight. This, this is under. Town.
Councillor Pelletier.
Certain. Not having enough space for the other to go all over.
Like I said, I think Jesse or council amazed comments. You know, or you reiterated that I don't get matters, you know, if we had five clothing stores on Rob Scott Avenue. Would you say anything, or if we had five restaurants for downtown corner, say anything?
Um, I, I've thought about that, this statement. And not everybody, everybody needs clothes, everybody needs to eat, not everybody uses alcohol marijuana as a consumer. So just, it's just a different social norm around having a concentration of whether it's, you know, bars or, or marijuana. Cannabis, I'm sorry, we change in the language, I'll get used to that. And so it's just, it's sort of a mindset and central concentration of it, so I appreciate all the different input and perspective. Any, any other? Hope for one away in or have thoughts about that and showing, actually the districts, it isn't all concentrated as you showed out, so just on. Or would be on base near Rob and Oscar Avenue, it's a larger. Genovia area. Council McGowan.
Maybe a silly question, but so do we have an ordinance that says that about alcohol? Establishments that sell alcohol?
I think.
We'll eventually.
Okay. Just, I mean, to me, they're the same time.
Well, that, that's my thought. We are, we are, this may, we are.
There's no, there's no detailed limitation. Other types of business. You know, it, it is basically just a reference to zoning. And, you know. These types of, well, any type of retail establishment. Regardless of what it sells. Allow in. That's true, so. Neighbor could come. So. You know, if we zoom out, sorry.
Yeah.
If we zoom out, you know, these are all housing development are one or two. You know, those have stipulations for different types of residential buildings that can be done. But, and highway commercial is, is, you know, a place for the neighborhood commercial, but. Downtown commercial. But the neighborhood commercial has more types of business that are allowed downtown. Not downtown commercial.
Thank you, any?
Essentially, it's not, I, I don't think. That relevant. But, yeah. I, yeah. Well, yeah, it's obvious. This is highlight. Chip. Base. Thanks. This, this is back. A. Here. In a. You want?
Any other council comment, I'll go back, any other public comment, please, want to the? Name and address, please.
Well, eleven, three thirty Congress Street. I'm just a little confused with council back and forth. I believe that, you know, two could be efficient enough from Main Street lease. Now, you've got, you've got to consider kids and all that, but, no, I don't, I know that sometimes you get that smell. Got four or five of them going on. Get that odor in Main Street. No, who do you, I don't want my grandchildren walking down the street for a festival or something, having that smell and. I'll try and explain, so I figured, you know, my opinion, two should be enough.
Thank you, I just wanted to spell like the myth that you're saying, there, there will be no smell to the storefront. There will be no smell, it's not a place where people go use, they purchase them, would you want to?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you missed last meeting, but if you want to talk afterwards, I can explain. The mentality, because that was a big portion of what we talked about, but smell came up as a topic of discussion, so that was well thought out. We did think of that, this. Thank you.
Is there any on Zoom as far as what comment on this is hard to say, there's the.
Diane, there is.
Oh, we know that name, thank you. So at this point, we have an amendment on the table to vote for, so we will go back to the council. To vote on the amendment that was proposed by councillor Pelletier. To add, no more than two cannabis businesses will be located in the downtown commercial, so all those in favor of the amendment? All those against? The motion passes, will one? As far as the amendment, we're, as far the amendment. The new language.
And the next.
So going on, okay, we're still in the same section and we're going to continue on, yep, the next, section thirty-nine-two.
Thirty-nine. Two-one. And. Motion to strike what is written, which is the operator of medical cannabis business shall obtain a business license in town and middle market. And fee paid.
So let me clarification, Mr. Councillor Pelletier, so what I provided you on the paper was actually what we need. The, the new language to be, right? Yeah. Yeah, so what is being struck is what's in there currently and what is on the paper, okay?
And, and what's going into that same thought?
Yes.
Is the operator of medical cannabis businesses shall obtain a town and middle market business license, a medical cannabis business permit. And pay the fees prior inspection and license being granted.
I'm so.
Okay, so let's, so section I, it, it looks like a one, but it's a I. So that needs to be chain inspection, the operators of medical cannabis, where it says. Yeah, the very first. I, not the second one, the very first capital I right there. The operation of medical cannabis cannabis businesses shall obtain a business license from the town of Millinocket after its successful inspection has been conducted and be paid. That needs to be stricken and replaced with the following, I'll just reiterate what.
Thank you.
We are fine, yeah. Yeah, the, and it needs to be changed only because we need to follow the process already in place, and that was after meeting with our code enforcement officer. So it needs to be changed to the following, the operators of medical cannabis businesses shall obtain a town of Millinocket business license. A medical cannabis business permit and pay the fees prior to inspection and license being granted certain. Okay, so motion made by councillor Pelletier, signed by councillor Bragdon. Any other comment on this? Another clarification needed from the council?
Pelletier made the motion and Bragdon seconded, sorry.
Yes. Yes. Any public comment on this change? All right.
I'm going to wash really.
Can you spell your last name for me, please?
If you. L. Yeah, L I.
B.
So B is in picture. I, L I.
Thank you.
So is it just big I and a little I, or are we talking about just the big I?
Just the big I right now. Yeah, just the big I. Yeah. Yeah. It is very confusing, just the way that, yeah, things are lettered here and numbered, it is very confusing. Okay. So we'll go back to the, we'll back to the council for a vote on the amendment.
There isn't any other comment?
Do you have coming?
No, I don't know.
Council in favor of amendment made by councillor Pelletier, yes, that passes five zero.
Great. Big I.
To go little I right after.
Your second, your third amendment.
Yeah.
So let's, yeah, let's get back to the.
So the very next. Very.
The next one. The next amendment that we're going to consider.
Big eye and little eye, this is the little eye. And it reads inspection and permitting fees for medical marijuana cannabis. Store front, medical cannabis cultivation and medical cannabis, probably. Thousand for the initial one year permit and one thousand for the annual renewal permit. My motion is that we. Keep the first year at one thousand as well, change that thousand, one thousand.
So you want two thousand? You want to strike the two thousand for one thousand for your motion?
Yeah.
And then what was the second one, I'm sorry? The, did you change the second fee? Okay. So the.
You're changing two thousand to a thousand, a thousand crap.
So we have a motion by councillor Pelletier to amend that section, you have a second? No second. Motion dies.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on.
You have another one?
Yeah.
Officer asked us to add. An I, I, a little I. And. It reads, the addition read, once a permit is issued, businesses will have six months to open. Additional time may be granted by CEO if necessary.
Motion made by councillor Pelletier, seconded by councillor Bragdon, council comment on this amendment? Councillor Bragdon?
This is the one you want to comment on, I'm assuming? Before I start, I didn't.
It's an addition, it's an addition that's not there.
Talking about.
Tom Malcolm, code enforcement officer, this is a one that we had initially talked about in, in our. Meeting on this. This is just how, well. You know, if, if a person takes out that it's a license issued. And then doesn't do anything. And just breaks off communication, nothing to. Do six months and then say, hey, listen, you're building, you're building and furnace, I can't get the furnace run on the month. You can hand it out, it's just because of mission to do that. Yeah, no, I get stuck. Thank you.
Any other council comment on this particular amendment? Councillor Pelletier?
I think it also, or six months in there, it was. Was chance to say, well, you're gonna have to reapply a permit because. On from six months, if they're going to be in a regis doing.
Councillor.
No disrespect to anybody or, or the recommendation. But with this topic. The feedback we received from the attorney on this was that it is. An annual. And if. If, if they are not established and operational in a year. It is. That to not do. Permit. Attorney. To. Or this. Restriction. I understand the intention. As I discussed. Digital. I. As the manager, I don't feel it. I think that as. As a potential new business is. Going to establish and open doors. There will be ongoing sessions. You know, our past six months. Mark and they're, and they're, you know, not expecting to be able to open doors and. And, and have their business operational at the year, and then that certainly needs to be communicated, can be. An internal decision at that time to extend the permit. And. But I, I don't feel it. Did the turn.
Thank you for your.
Again.
It's up to the council, we agree. Yeah, thank you. Any other council comment on that? Any? Any, any public comment on changing the language, six months?
Raphael Hube Ashvili, I could see both sides, I guess, but I guess I would kind of agree with him, if you pay the fee for a year permit. Seems like you should get a year, but also I can, from his end, trying to do something responsive, so. Yes, I would agree with your permit, just because he's unresponsive, doesn't matter time. Got to communicate or not, and after here you're done either ways.
Think that kind of. The original, well. With, in the current draft, in the current. With, in the current draft, in the current. Orderment and in the current, uh, you know, operation. There's no. It doesn't specify the time period that permit. And that's where we got into. With having a permit out, I think interest in a new business and, and, and not being able. To, uh. This would allow that limitation and, and stop at a year of need.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Lebradon. Oh, I'm sorry, come right up.
Uh, Kyle Fuller, one sixty-nine Congress Street. Um, I feel if there's no limitation on how long someone can hold the license. If there's another, if, say I'm running Spencer in town, it's just that me from the other license and holding it. And I cornered the market, I'm an op. It just leaves the door open for. Basically, it said bacon and an operator that's going to run a store to not be able to, but someone's just holding license. That's how I see it. Thank you.
And just to be clear, this draft of the order makes that. One. And it, and, and has to be renewed each year. So if, if somebody is not actively using that permit. At the end of the year, it would be, it would not be renewed. Be, become.
Just to add, I mean, six months seems like a very big note. Oh, I mean, pretty basic. Couple cases. So. Secure packet. I don't see how I. That's how I see it.
Appreciate your comment. Thank you, Council Bragden.
Well, I have a question. So assume Jane Doe comes to town and also. Six months unable to, since that they're not going. But it's not anyway, so they don't get. Um, they would only sell some stuff. If we add this to it. You know, they, it's all I understand.
Although the wording suggested. ended that. I guess for, for me. Permit is good for.
That's my, but as much as I would, I completely agree with Mr. Fuller. Um, I see any holes and gaps, just add those. Especially over self-help locations, like a four-year, why am I not? Stand. Uh, both side, I, I personally, I'm, I'm very much for this, but.
Thank you, Lebradon.
Uh, Raphael Hublach really, I was just following up with him. I, I think, I don't know. Think I hear what you're saying is like, say I come to town, I get a permit, I open a business, there's already one open, so there's two more permits. What keeps me from applying for the other two permits? And icing everybody else out, and, you know, I could pay the fee every, every year just to not have competition, right? Is there any, I guess, is there any language in here that allows people to have multiple license?
No, um, but if, if. It would likely not be renewed at the one year.
Well, why can't I just reapply every year? Just to hold it and not open, like I already have one location, right? Why can't I apply for those other two licenses, hold them up for a year? Not that I would do that, I'm just saying, you know, this. Have license, I guess.
Um. There's no stipulation stating otherwise.
So I think that's part of it. Some, you know, some grand pubac come in here and just has all the money, a thousand dollars every year to keep competition out of, don't change, you know?
If you appreciate your comments, Council Pelletier?
Why would we reissue or renew, reissue a permit of either. Had them for a year and did not.
At, at the administrative level, we wouldn't.
But my question still stands for you to do that.
Um, with good reason, yeah.
So same person wanted to open pre-business. Did that, I'd be excited.
He opened the business, they opened the business, yes, but not the industry. We would have. We would have strong reason. I.
For a permit.
Then back to Mr. Fuller's point, when they're, so on, potential, I'm also going to business that has to wait. I twelve months, I think, where they call it license to.
I would, I, I, if I could just make a comment too, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, if somebody came to the town and they wanted to go through this process, they. They probably are, are further enough down the road that they're ready to open a business and should be able to in six months. Um, if they're gonna pay the fees to be infected. And so I, I, I'm in favor of, I'm, I'm hearing both sides and I can see both sides, but. At this point, I'm in favor of the amendment, I will, uh, go.
So. Yeah, what if a business, uh. A potential business, new business owner came down, the intention of doing. And revived the tyrannosaurus back and the tyrannosaurus rex are stomping on businesses we didn't have. We are, we are so far into. And what I believe is the bizarre scenario that, uh, you know. And I'll stop there.
Well, aren't we kind of going through situational fire? I get that we're changing it. My, my point still stands legally. How can we enforce this? They pay for a license. We don't have wording in here that says we'll revoke license for any, as part of it. And the cost of the person, right? That means that we're, I mean, there's nothing that says we'll revoke it. At the six-month time, at the discretion of the CEO, it don't say that. It just says, once a permit is issued, we'll have to fulfill it, I mean. But what if he doesn't do anything? I mean, it's not clear, not concise, somehow.
Your counsel is.
Reason maybe. Fucking dispensary. Well, and that may take more than six months to really build a storefront. Because they, they can all kinds of things. They're marijuana. Dude.
Thank you. Right, what, we'll go back to the.
Raphael Hublach, yeah, yeah, I think there needs to be a distinction between storefronts, dispensaries. As a dispensary is technically like two businesses, you have the forefront and you have the cultivation. However, it's vertically integrated, that's technically two businesses. Right, you have, you have to be off-site, in a different building, you demand that it's not on-site.
We, we already defined that. That's already been defined up earlier.
But what I'm saying is that, like, if you only give somebody six months, I have to focus on the storefront. Now, I, like, cultivating is a full-time, multiple-person situation, that all, that is a way more intensive.
Different licenses. I mean.
But they're falling under the same protocol, though. We admit, uh, if we use.
I would recommend it.
So thank you.
My administrative rep, it's our. That unless you shut up, uh, my administrative.
Thank, thank you for your comment. That's where I was going with this because there's so much, um, whether it's confusion or questions, um. It's not the time to add it, add it to, now, we can come back and revisit this if we need to, um, some other time. So, yeah, let's go back and let's vote, um, on the amendment, um. That was put forward, once a permit is issued, businesses will have six months to open, additional time may be granted by CEO if necessary. All those in favor of that amendment? All those against? Here we go, five zero, it does not pass. Thank you.
Zero five.
Zero five, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's been a while since.
For the record.
For the record, thank you for keep. Thank you, um, but that was good conversation and good discussion to have. We will move forward to see, uh, other sections. Let's get past I, right? If there's anything else, um. That has been identified by other counselors. Um, in this order as is for to bring forth for an amendment. And if not, we can talk about the, the whole ordinance in, in, in its entirety. So we have two, we've made two amendments, we'll. We've got two amendments that pass. Any other counsel comment on? Council of Bragden?
Just a couple of quick notes, somebody that weren't here last time. Uh, we went through the whole thing in forty-five minutes. Uh, we had some language in there, which I wrote earlier about with, uh, with smell. Uh, that was based on the situation that happened, but actually, they the first, original facility, so. Uh, that language stayed with a week in, uh, we added some fire safety stuff in there, a knock box on the outside of the building. Uh, we updated language definitions and then we changed, uh, the MRSA coding patch, so those really came just out of line. Um, like.
Do we have any public comment on the order? The ordinance. At this time, before we go to a vote. Yes, come up to the, but get your name, address, please.
Kyle Fuller, one sixty-nine Congress Street, um. So basically, uh, this ordinance would allow a singer's, uh, single-source caregiver storefront. Um, one with a cultivation site right here in town. Um, the setup is already permitted in other communities in Maine. Uh, it brings three clear benefits, in my opinion, uh, first being patient access and affordability. Uh, right now, patients are leaving town to find medicine, a connected storefront. Keeps access local and eliminates out-of-town suppliers, that means patients keep more money in pockets. And no, keep money in the community, basically. Um. Second, um, consistency with cultivation nearby and tied directly to the storefront, patients can count on steady quality and supply. Um, the local impact, uh, patient spending stays in town. It supports local jobs and strengthens the community, uh, instead of sending dollars out of town to pros elsewhere. Um, this is a particular step that, uh, a practical step that aligns us with other main towns. And ensures both patients and the community benefit. Thank you.
Public comment?
Well, Levitt, thirty Congress Street. I've been around this council for a long time. I don't think. All is, are all in favor of this. Cause I see the faces in that, so much confusion going on, this one or that one. And, uh, I know it's business and that, but gotta consider different things, uh. I'm trying to understand it, cause like I said, I missed two weeks ago and trying to understand everything going on. But at this second meeting, I'm watching you all and it seemed like they're all on, in one basket. Looks like you feels about different things and what is gonna happen. But once this is passed, I know it's gonna be, but. We're gonna have to face, uh, different things that's gonna happen. But, uh, I, I'm just, myself is just confused. At what everybody's talking about, I, I know, Matthew, you explained it, that, but. Like I said, just getting into it right now, and I wish I would have been at the first one. Cause I, I could have heard all the different things. Just hearing you guys tonight, like I said, you've taken a long time doing this, but first meeting. Oh, everything should have been smoothed out, but it looks like you guys still have questions and how to proceed this. That's all I'm asked for is clarity. That this is, that you all agree on and just, uh, you know, I'm just confused, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Levitt. And I appreciate your comments and I'll go to, uh, Councilor Bragden. And I know some, it was getting confusing on certain little parts of it. I will let you know that, uh. We all, we have read through this and we have gone over it and there's a lot of time that's been spent on this. When it comes down to making amendments to certain language and we get down to nitty-gritty, sometimes it does appear confusing and we need to work them out amongst ourselves. And it's a public hearing for that purpose to hear from the public. So I can appreciate probably what my face looked like and some of the confusion for little pieces of it, but in its entirety, in its whole, we have spent time on this. Thank you, Lebradon.
Yeah, I was kind of saying something very similar, uh, so how this started, I had reached out to, uh, manager Tom. And we're going through the entire one booked up, it's, uh, where it came up and it was announced months ago and said, start. Um. And so we did, that's the first one that we did, and, uh, we spent a lot of time on this, three of us. We brought it to the council and we did bring in the council a couple of times. Get their opinion, and I kind of wish, seeing how this meeting, I wish I would have done what I did. Getting, um, was a lot more, we'll hear in the first meeting. But, uh, I went through a breakdown of every single change that they highlighted, the blue and red and white stripe. Um, obviously counselors have their own opinions and take on certain agendas, which is why there was so much confusion tonight. Is they want to add what they think is necessary in the documents, to stand with that. Um, got everybody. Um, but what I would love to do, if you'd like, I still have Bobby of, of the blue highlights and the red highlights. I can send it to you or I over it with you and kind of explain what our thought process was, um, you know, the meeting is online, so. Input, public input, um, the last quite a bit of input that night, so, you know, I'm going to do that offline if you'd like.
Thank you, um, you're gonna wrap us up, Council Pelletier?
Generally. Well, this is just speaking. We have not changed anything, uh, lines with, with rich. That's still. Not visible at all. The medical one stayed ordained and this brings in their references to the law on all segments. But we're limited number of them. We didn't do that in six or seven or eight of them, fine. We wouldn't have a living standard of say that, no, we find one. Well, it's being more of a server with the.
All right, thank you. Uh, we're gonna end our public hearing and I am gonna call for a vote on ordinance two dash twenty twenty-five. As amended, all those in favor? All those again. All those abstaining? Four, zero, down.
I'll do that with all the ones.
Four, zero, one.
Four, zero, one.
Standing, thank you.
Yeah. That path is. That's. Uh, Clark, did you have a question?
Oh, just notation, uh, I'm out of public here.
Six thirty-six.
Thank you.
That's gonna take us into new business and the manager's report.
Hey, Mr. Chair, uh. I am going to go over these things in my. Full report, which is available at website. The most important message to get out. Brian, this is for you, bud. Have a little special mention to. Our, uh, why twenty was said it was passed, but.
Is currently eight. Need to. Stipulations and the. Confidential agreement that we. Maneuvering through the. Final stages of. We set to bring. Tax commitment first. To the agenda of October nine, over. That update and then. Amendment. Is expected to take place on or. October, which would, which would fills out thirty days. Like second week of November. Not good. However. Payment any amount can be made at any. And. For to make use of that. Uh. Good news, though. Uh, as we heard loud and clear throughout. Budget shot. Bring. Interest. Second payment that has. Do. Do. In January. Two. In. Ending. Uh, heating costs. With the thing, so. Uh. President and I, it's a pretty deep bill to, um, handles. The agreement that we are. Very well positioned to come up there. Thankfully, responsibly recommend that. I pay it, push out to. April. I, uh. Name it. Probably. Has. That. I. You. Same be. I'm reset. Uh. Is monitor April. Those identified. On. I. Appreciate the input of community here, I just see. To be. Yeah. Change for. To for the, for the ordinance that we've been doing on itself. Um, Malcolm, our chief. Gerald, he did. Is it? Final, uh, stages sitting in like in lots. Uh, we have to. Do a few final tweaks to it. But. We be ready. For the, for the specialty process that we need to go to, like. And. Out. Count. Out. Getting a member. For that. And, uh. Thankfully. Ryan and public works. Through and. Cemetery. Rounds through. Given the, given the type of summer we had, there were. Time, uh. We decided to. Change course with some of those folks and we were able to set around. Town owned, closed properties and start getting those cleaned up. So that's something that we likely be planning to handle. Regularly move forward, but, you know, we have an expectation that. Community members. Act players. Right in. In addition of their laws. Should be doing. How, thank you. And. That is all wonderful, I also do want to put a plug in, I heard from. Uh. Library earlier this week. They. The initiative director has planned and set up the meet the candidates tonight. And that is. Scheduled for October twentieth. Six o'clock at library, uh, and if you. Like a Zoom link to follow along, you can. Uh. Hit that from. Uh, library, we can best wire or by. And info at. Millenock at L I S dot. That will be. Uh. That will have participation from the free school board candidate, Kevin. Libby, Gregory. Council. Hellville Asher. Like Thor, I can run in and. A little sooner than I think they have. Yes, there's any other. Questions or comments that you have under the banner of. Work?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, any?
And I do just, sorry, I do just want to point out, you know, we were. Um. In. Putting together. Code. Permitting. Update each, each month, so. Uh. So I'd like, you know, attention to that.
Yes.
We're speaking. As I always, you know, reach. Just theory. But. Pretty proud of everyone.
Thank you for your managers' report. Good stuff in here, and especially, um, in relation to you, you talked about, uh, tax bill. Being the truth. Was that up? More time to pay that. When it does. About. Any other council comments on the management report? Any public comment on the management report? Yes, come to the mic, fit your name.
Well, I've it three thirty, Congress Street, I'm just wondering, do you have an idea? Act rate is hard. Everything just in there. I've talked to the manager before, but I mean, I, I didn't know if there was a tax rate that. That's what's up.
No, uh. No, it's, it's another negotiation of gated. We. Able to hit tax. So we, we really. Can't get into those, uh. Scenarios and, and calculations of the rate and all that until. Uh. That final agreement is in place. Uh. It'll likely be the week of the night that. Uh, I think it's numbers out. Uh. As fans right now. I feel very good about. Um, what the tax bill like in. Any.
Okay, so it shouldn't. Twenty, uh, under twenty.
Ah, no, sir.
Oh, boy.
Right. It'll probably cut down, but you're not, you're not, I don't want, so the bill will be like, yeah.
Yeah.
I do. Thank you.
Okay. So seeing no other, uh, public comment or, or council comment, we will move on with our order. Number two oh four dash twenty twenty-five, can, uh, councillor Mackin, may I have you read that?
Order number two oh four dash twenty twenty-five, providing for execution of the town warrant for September twenty fifth. Twenty twenty-five. It is ordered that the town warrant for September twenty-fifth. Twenty twenty-five in the amount of eighty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars and ten cents hereby approved.
Motion made by councillor Mackin, seconded by councillor Bragden, have any hitters to share with her? Any heavy hitters?
Yes.
Want to tell us about, please?
Um, three thousand forty-six dollars and four cents to chat of communication internet. Three thousand sixty-two dollars and fifty-five cents emery for paving. Forty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. The water company for hydrant. Eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-five cents. Um, municipal waste solution. Uh, six thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars to the town of Easton Lotte for prep.
Thank you. Any other council comment on this? Any public comment on the order? Be a nun, back to the council for a vote on order number two of all those in favor. And that motion passes six zero, I will also have you read order number two oh five. Councillor Mackin.
Order number two oh five dash twenty twenty-five, providing for execution of the race water warrant for September twenty-fifth. Twenty twenty-five, it is ordered that the race water warrant. For September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of ninety-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and nineteen cents is hereby approved.
Uh, motion made by councillor Mackin, seconded by councillor Bragden. Any hitters to tell us about?
Three thousand six hundred and five dollars and ninety-five cents to the main water company. Nine thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and sixty cents Oliver Associates. Inc. The pump station and seventy-nine thousand. Five hundred and eight dollars and thirty-five cents keep up construction for the pump station. And four thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. To the site town.
Any public comment on the order? Be a nun, back to the council for a vote on order number two zero five, all those in favor. And that passes. Five zero, I'm doing my, I'm doing my math wrong, right? Since six zero left. Five zero. All right, councillor McGowan, can I have you read order number two of the.
Order number two oh six dash twenty twenty-five, providing for street and parking lot closures for Halloween event. It is ordered that the Millenocket Town Council authorizes the street and parking lot closures listed below for Halloween twenty twenty-five. St. Louis Avenue from Heritage Drive to New Jersey Street. October thirty-first, four to seven P M. Independence Lane at Nassau intersection, four to seven P M. Edmonds Park Parking Lot, two to eight P M. Poplar Street from Penox Street Avenue to Biden Avenue, two to eight P M. Lower end of Westwood near Nazarene Church. Four to six.
Motion made by councillor McGowan, seconded by councillor Bragden, any council comment on the order? Any public comment on the order? Be a nun, back to the council for a vote on order. Uh, two oh six, all those in favor? And that passes five zero. Takes us into reports and communications, warrant committee for October ninth, council meeting, councillor McGowan and councillor Palatier, are you okay with that? You're okay, very good, I don't have a chair committee report, that takes us into two-minute public comment, is there anything left for us to discuss? Any other comments? Yes. Yeah.
Motion adjourned.
Uh, motion made by councillor Bragden.
Second.
Second by councillor McGowan to adjourn, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, all against. One.
Yeah.
We're out of here.
Will you stay here, Russell?
Have a good evening, everybody.